Roll call, please.
Ms. Jacomando?
Present.
Ms. Boralli?
Present.
Ms. Urcello?
Present.
Ms. Ianello?
Present.
Mr. Laurentino?
Present.
Ms. Roloff?
Here.
Ms. Torbic?
Present.
Ms. Traverso?
Here.
Ms. O'Dorelli?
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Adequate notice of this meeting has been sent to all members of the Board of Education and to the Bergen Record in accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, 1975. You want them to go first, or are you going to do your report first?
I will introduce. So I'll save my report for Wednesday. We have two new student Board of Education representatives. We have Zuzi and Mia, and I'm going to have them introduce themselves to the board at this time.
Thank you. Let's see, I have to get used to talking into the microphone. I don't remember the last time I spoke into a microphone. Okay, a little closer. Oh, okay, I think this is good. Well, good evening, everyone. My name is Mia Koszewski. I'm a junior at this high school. And a little bit about me, I love to play volleyball, so I've been on the volleyball team since freshman year. And also, I'm currently in the process of making a mental health club for our school. Last year, a couple of friends and I, we got together and began a club, which I'm not going to talk too much about because we're actually going to be speaking about it later tonight. So you'll hear us speak about that again. And just I'm very excited to be here. I can remember like last year when I went to the first Board of Ed meeting, seeing like two student representatives here, and at the time I didn't know like really what they did. So I was very curious into their role, and I'm very grateful that I got the position. So thank you guys so much.
Welcome, Mia.
Congratulations. Welcome.
All right, hi, everyone. I'm Zuzanna Bubienko. I'm a senior at Saddle Brook High School, and I'm incredibly honored to have this position, to be with you guys tonight and for the rest of the year. I'm really passionate about making sure student voices are heard, not just the loudest, but all of them. A little bit about me, I'm Polish. I'm really big on my family. I'm a big sister, a little sister. My family means the world to me. I've always been fascinated by anatomy. When my dream is to become a nurse and specialize in neuroscience. Just like Mia said, sports is such a huge part of my life. I play soccer. I love soccer. I breathe soccer. Sixth grade me was like hyped when I was thinking to myself, I'd be able to play high school soccer, and now I'm here. Outside of school, it's I'm either watching Bluey with my little sisters. I'm going for a run. Or I'm devouring fruit salads because I can live off of green grapes. But I'm really excited to be the bridge between the students and the board, and I can't wait to see what we can accomplish together. And I'm really happy that I get to do it with you, and I'm really excited to see what we can accomplish together. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Very cool.
Well, welcome, Mia and Zuzi. All right, so on the agenda for Wednesday is the, there's an item to approve, two new club stipends at the middle school high school. So as you may know, in the teacher's contract and the SBA contract, they have every club listed with a stipend attached to it. So whenever we add a club, we have to add it to that contract. It's getting a little bit tricky because we're so big on listening to our students and having student feedback that when they want to start these clubs, we don't want to stop them. But that's why we have to add a sidebar to the contract in order to have these clubs. So tonight, we are going to have students share their ideas about one club that's called the Investment Club, and the other club is called the Reset Club. So we will start with, which one? Investment?
Investment.
We will start with the Investment Club, and we are going to have Zuzi and Lucinda, do you two? Nope, okay. We're going to have Zuzi share about the Investment Club. So she's going to provide the Board of Education with some more information.
Okay, I'm introducing myself again, but I'm Zuzanna Bubienko, and I'm here to officially propose the Investment Club as a recognized student organization. We started this club informally at the end of last year and saw a strong turnout at multiple meetings. There's real interest among students. Our goal is to give students a space to learn about personal finance, investing, and the stock market in a way that's hands-on and engaging. In fact, during our Stock Simulation Challenge, we built mock portfolios that were not only competitive, but also highly profitable, showing that students are not only interested, but already learning to think like real investors. The purpose of this club is simple, to go beyond basic financial literacy and provide students with real-world skills: budgeting, saving, evaluating risk, and understanding market trends. These are essential life skills that aren't always taught in the classroom, but are critical for college career readiness and personal independence. And it's open to everyone. No experience needed. I started, I had no idea what the stock market was, and with Mr. Kushner, who's the physics teacher in our school, he was open to the idea to help us to introduce it to students. But making this club official will allow us to grow and bring even more value to our school community. Thank you.
Thank you, Zuzi. And next, we have Lucinda and Mia. They're going to share about the Reset Club, and Ms. Waldman is here as one of the co-advisors for that club as well.
Hi, I'm Elisa Waldman. And together with Jessica Olivera, we're the advisors of the Reset Club. The Reset Club started this past, last September in 2024. We meet one to two times every month, and we have some of our officers, Lucinda, Mia, to tell you a little bit more.
So I'm the co-founder of the Reset Club, and last year while the club was in the works, I was the vice president. And as Ms. Waldman said, last year with Gianna Froyan, who she's not here today, but Gianna Froyan and I, we got together because we wanted to really encapsulate a club that could give students a place to go both physically and mentally. And what I mean by that is physically, what our club does is we'll meet about twice a month during lunch, and we'll do different kinds of activities depending on the theme for that month, all centered around mental health and wellness. And for example, we've made jewelry before. Hopefully, when the weather is nice out, we'll be able to go for walks. We've had like holiday-themed movies if it was around Christmas time. And one time, we had an ice cream social where we literally just brought an ice cream and had all students be able to speak with each other and connect, meet new people, and also catch up with old friends. And our real goal with the club is we want students to be able to take like a pause in their day and have that mental break before they continue on with the rest of their schooling. And, you know, we noticed that especially during lunchtime, it can be easy, and I'm guilty of this too, to just grab your phone for an hour and just scroll away. But I'll say, at least for me, I never really feel better after that. So we're hoping that this club also provides an environment where students can disconnect from their phones and reconnect with their peers.
So Mia pretty summed it, pretty much summed it up. We were supposed to have another member with us today, but it seems like she can't make it. My name's Lucinda. I'm just a member in the club, but I'm hoping I can move up to a position in the club because I really do value what this club strives for and what they want to accomplish this year. And the reason why we know that the club has interest is because people have been consistently showing up to the club and engaging in it, and not just coming like showing up to just put a club on their application or anything, but they actually are interested. They give us ideas, and, you know, they engage with each other. I feel like people have kind of branched out, like we have a little group in there now, and we're all friends with each other. And honestly, I feel like it improved like the mental health and like, it gave us an opportunity to do something else with our time, as Mia stated. And that's how we know that the club is going to continue to grow because we have engaging members who love it and what it does.
Do you have any questions?
So yeah, we meet during lunch because a lot of people are involved in extracurriculars, so sports are a big conflict. So lunch is the perfect time for people to meet because most people don't have anything to do during lunch. So they'll just come, like they'll go to the meeting, and then we'll hang out there.
So that was something we have, high school has only one period for lunch. All of high school has Period Six lunch. And that was one of the benefits of doing that is that they're able to meet with their clubs and they're able to participate in some extracurricular activities at that time. And then we have plenty of clubs that meet before and after school as well.
I, I just want to say that I think it's a good idea because I know there's a lot of kids that sometimes sit alone at lunch or feel uncomfortable being in the lunchroom, and they don't have a friend there that day. But I remember my daughter wanting to stay home that day because she had no one to sit with at lunch. And it just, it seems like such a good idea for them to like know that there's always somebody there socially to go to and to hang out with.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, we have a couple of students who usually, who don't have many friends, who have started coming to the club and met other people, which is really great.
Is there criteria?
No. Anyone is allowed to join.
How many do you have approximately right now?
We have an average, I don't have a, you wrote down? Oh, we usually have about 10 to 20 people, 10 to 15, depending on, we did a WICAN marathon last year that had a lot of people. Oh, we have 41 students in the Google Classroom, but we have about 10 to 15 depending on the activities. Sometimes people go to like extra help during lunch, so we have a consistent amount.
And do they stay in the cafeterias or like a smaller space they can go and sort of reset that way?
Yeah, we meet in a classroom.
In a classroom?
Yeah.
Great questions. Anything else? Well, thank you, Ms. Waldman. Thank you, Lucinda, for taking the time tonight to come share with our Board of Education. We appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
And everyone's so well-spoken. It's just, it's amazing. If I was a, ever being a junior in high school, I'm not going to be able to put a sentence together. Everyone is so well-spoken.
When you have the opportunity to meet with these students.
Who does public speaking?
Mrs. Rippis is the public speaking teacher.
She's crushing it.
When you have the opportunity to meet with our students one-on-one and have conversations with them, like you're so proud. It's amazing.
Yeah.
Yeah, and for someone with, I have an eight-year-old, and it's tough to have a conversation with her sometimes. So I, I look forward to seeing what she becomes, what she becomes your age.
And the fact that you want to disconnect and get off of your phones and actually look at somebody else and talk to them is major. That's so big.
It's huge.
So the board may remember that in August, we did very short testing presentations with the Board of Education. So on Wednesday night, Mrs. Jenkins and Mrs. DeBonus are going to join us, and they're going to present on the NJGPA scores, the Access4L assessment, and then the Class of 2025 Graduation Pathways Report.
Mr. Crowdy, did you want to do a report tonight?
Yeah, just discuss some of our projects. Hey, if the board has any questions. The referendum projects are winding down at the middle school, high school. You could see the front being done, and also now they moved over. The columns are done here. They moved over to the middle school entrance, and they're working on, on those pillars. Then they're going to put the, the company will put the roof on and the sign, and they should be moving back to the front entrance to the field next. We'll work that out, schedule for that. The back, back by the field, those that attended the football games saw all the improvements. We just got the sign delivered and installed on Tuesday. We have to work out, had to work out some wiring with the board, and then training is actually tomorrow, so it should be on for the next game, any games this week, and then football on Friday. The back area, we're going to have that maintenance area off of Poplar. The fencing, the gate electric is all done. We're waiting for a few cameras to get installed. But that's up and running, and that worked great for the football game as well. To, to put the visitor buses back there and a few other visitor cars back there was, was good. Washington, they're in the process of changing all the windows. If you pass by there, you'll, you probably can get a glimpse of the last orange panel if you get there by tomorrow. But that project is winding down, and they hope to be done if all the weather holds up by Friday. And Coolidge School, we're going to start later this week. We started some plantings. We're going to put all stone-down rocks in front instead of the mulch. And we'll keep working on the landscaping and also getting quotes on some brick repointing. And we're finalizing a, some quotes received for replacement of various, mostly interior doors in the district. You know, we did a bunch of interior doors, mostly classrooms, back with the last referendum and over the years. So now we're focusing on some other doors and get them done. But it's throughout the, throughout the district, all buildings. And that'll probably be the last project on the referendum that I could see. And the cafeteria, if you haven't seen the equipment, if you want to take a walk down after the meeting, we can go see it. I know Ms. Violetta posted pictures, but I think everybody is really liking the way it came out. Any other questions? Any questions on the projects?
Is there a tentative, through the chair, sorry? Is there a tentative date as to maybe when it's going to be completed? Just the front. I'm not talking about the side.
The front here at the high school? Well, I think the brickwork, so they're moving from the brickwork, those, they'll move to the back. It's two different crews, and then they're going to start, hopefully by the end of this week, start doing the electric for the new high school, middle school signs, the lighting nets underneath and attached to the, the roof areas. I'm looking to get, we're supposed to have a meeting sometime this week, and I'll get a better idea of that. I mean, the weather's been, you know, great cooperating. It hasn't rained that much, so the project's moving. But at least to the end of this month, I would think the front is done. Then they're going to be in the back for a little while.
Looks good. Everything looks good.
Yeah, it's coming out good. You know, but right out here, there's going to be a new set of, I think it's 24 bike racks. So a whole new concrete pad out here with all the bikes. So hopefully they're not tied to the fences or across from the library, that they're all putting them over here.
Once the new bike racks are in and people, students still train their bikes to the fence, are there going to be consequences?
Jail.
I'm okay with that.
Stoning.
Stoning.
No, I'm just saying a detention, something.
How dare we?
I mean, just ask.
I don't know. Not high, not high on my priority list.
We are going to make sure that the cameras are on the bike racks because we did have two bikes stolen over the summer. They were on video. We shared it with the police. They were caught.
Nice.
I know. Okay. So can I have a motion to open the meeting to the public?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Did you want to say anything to us? Okay, can I have a motion to close?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So let's see, Board Action items, we have, what, what do I have to do? Oh, I know, I'm just going to say it, I know. Does anybody have any questions regarding the Board Action?
So for the Board Action, we have our minutes to be approved. We have the power professional staff. So twice a year, we have to submit our number of power professionals and their assignments to the county. Our District Nursing Services Plan, that's mandated every year. We have our school self-assessment for determining grades under the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights Act. That's our, part of our HIBLA. And every school, at the end of the school year, they need to self-assess, so they go through an entire rubric. The highest you can get, you can score yourself is 78. Most of our schools are, all of them are set between 71, they're 71, 72, or 73 is how they scored themselves. I have to say, they are a little bit hard on themselves because you are supposed to have the documentation. So if they don't have the documentation, they don't give it to themselves. But the feedback from that, from Mr. Osborne, Dr. Osborne, who's our anti-bullying coordinator across the district, was that, you know, just to suggest to each building principal that their skip teams or their climate and culture teams meet every year and look at that rubric, and then they plan accordingly for the following school year. But I will say, every year, we are very consistent with these scores, and I really do feel as if we're doing a great job with it. The last 1.16, that's work-based learning. That's for our special education students here at the high school. Once you turn 16, I believe it's 16, you, per their IEP, participate in some vocational training. So what the team has done is they go around the town, and they look for companies that are willing to take on these students with the power to give them some job training locally. So we have them going to the Saddle Brook Library, the Saddle Brook Tech Department here in the high school, Walgreens at the corner of Market Street, Gigi's, is it Gigi's Cafe?
Yes.
Gigi's Cafe, Nick's Sandwich Shop, and then Washington School to help out with the preschool program. So those are currently the work-based learning sites at the moment.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions? Okay. Education and curriculum?
Okay.
Does anybody have any questions?
I will go through it. So field trips, I just opened it up. The comp cheer team to go to Ameriture 2026 Internationals. You'll see marching band and color guard for all the football games and band fests that they do every year, Memorial Day parades, a third grade trip at Long School to Bronx Zoo, pre-K at Washington School to visit Secor Farms for the fall. And then our kindergarten classes, I believe it was last year they started this, although it might have been two years ago, part of their social studies curriculum, they do a community tour. And they go to the fire station, the police station, the library, and they visit all the places around the community. So that's on there as well. And let me see what else. Hold on. You'll see all the updated curricula. You might remember that last month, I told you, we had to update all the math curricula because they updated the standards. There was some of the grade levels on last month's agenda. The remaining ones are on this month's agenda. And then they updated all the sale curricula. Those, that's our special education classes here at the middle school, high school. And the last 1.25 is we've been doing this the last few years, since, probably since I've been in this position, to approve a delayed opening for the middle high school for PSAT testing. It just makes that testing period go a lot smoother.
Any questions? Okay, Budget and Finance.
So there may be some changes by the time Wednesday comes. There was just so much to do with opening of school and the projects that I was trying to have a revised, number 15, 16, a revised June Board Secretary's Report, where I prepare for the closing of the books. I did have one out, June's report was on the August meeting, but I always do one where I have to do other entries, and I put a final one on. Whether I get that done for Wednesday, or we'll put it on for October, it'll still be in time for the audit. The July report, which I put towards the end, '24 and '25, again, I'm trying to have that done and work out with the treasurer, but that may or may not be done. I'll give you an email probably later Tuesday, tomorrow, to update you on that. And, and what? It is. And actually, getting the reports on is about CUSAC, so. We're also trying to have, we have one bill standing. We're trying to do checks today. But again, staffing, that may or may not get done, and the rest, I think, was okay.
I'll do the workshops. We have our special education administrators attending the annual autism conference in New Jersey. We have, let's see, counselors attending Suicide Prevention Conference, school climate team, HIB. We have, you know, what I will say about our staff here is that they are so willing and wanting to continue their learning that they really, they sign up for all these professional learning workshops, which is really lovely. Our PT across the district, she is Practical Strategies for Supporting Disregulated Children. One of our principals is attending a social media seminar on, on social media best practices for, for students. We have our business administrator, Mr. Crowdy, attending some workshops that he finds lovely and very exciting. We have our.
Prepare for the audit.
They're very exciting. We have our.
You sound truly excited.
School Board, all our board members, we listed everybody to it, and we hope everyone's able to join us in Atlantic City for the New Jersey School Board's annual workshop.
And if I can continue going back to number 20. We did approve acceptance of this, the Playground Grant for $81,000 in, in August. However, they want specific wording in the resolution. I don't want to comply with that, or else we won't get the funds. So just had to revise that, and that's what they're looking for. Hopefully, they'll be happy with that.
Point 21, the SAP program, Suspension Alternative Program. That's, we utilize that sometimes at the middle school, high school for students that are getting in, in trouble with their code of conduct repeatedly, and our consequences don't seem to work. And the SAP program offers some counseling, both individual and family, and some other supports as well. So that's a contract that when we are able to utilize it, we will.
Ray, what was 120?
That wasn't fast enough, but we're still talking on 20.
Sorry.
It's all right. The playground, we're, we're working with a company to get some proposals for the three elementary schools. And if the funding's there with, with this playground grant, we're trying to also continue with doing Washington School. But if that gets moving, I mean, the work could be done to playgrounds, hopefully a little bit before the winter and then right after it. So we'll keep you up to date with that one. 22 is to update all our networking equipment using, we got E-rate, federal E-rate money, which is great because as you can see there, 50% is paid by that. And 23 is just an item for approving the financing we did on the purchase of computers, the Chromebooks, and the interactive monitors. It's an audit adjustment I have to do, and I spoke about the last two items. Okay, now I'm done.
Does anybody have any questions?
Through the chair.
Yes, ma'am.
On 22, is that half of the figure, or is that the full figure and they're going to pay half? Is that our F22?
22, that is the full amount for that purchase. There is one more coming, probably have it in October for wiring. This is the bulk of the equipment, but 250 is the total, so we're paying half of that.
So I will, I want to elaborate on that as well. If you go into, if you have the honor of walking into one of our network closets, you'll see a whole slew of wires thrown about. So these network switches and all of this equipment, it's going to update our Wi-Fi and our internet access across the district. And with our increased one-to-one initiatives with our students, and then with our interactive displays in every classroom, the hope is that having new switches and an entire new network across the district will really support that.
Great. Sure. Would that make the network then more secure?
Yes.
I like the way you said if you had the privilege of walking into one of our closets. I like that. Any other questions? Okay, Facilities and Operations.
Self-explanatory.
Yeah. Does anybody have any questions?
Well, just on facilities, I'm going to, I didn't bring up in my report, but we had talked about going around to, toward the schools. We still can do that. You've seen probably a bunch of stuff here at the high school already, some of the other buildings. There's not like, you know, great things to see unless you want to go to the boiler room or see a classroom that got the tile abated, but.
I'd like to go to the boiler.
Everybody's welcome to go. I will bring you there. We could, we could.
It was just the way you said it.
We can go right here after the meeting if you want to go down there and see the new boilers.
I'd like to see the new boilers.
The cafeteria, we could see.
Mrs. Mansfield had amazing things to say about the, the new boiler system at Long School.
I'm sure she did.
And how much extra room she has there.
Yes.
I will.
I will say that I've actually been stopping into the cafeterias here during lunchtime just to kind of get feedback from the students, and they love it. They are very excited about the new furniture.
Good.
I was excited about ringing a bell.
And also Coolidge, if anybody wants to stop by, we had a few, few board members stop by. But if you want, just email me, and we'll make arrangements to.
Just waiting for the invite there, Ray.
You got an invite.
You missed it, Mike.
Any other questions, guys? Okay, Policy.
So for the policies, this is the second reading. So you may recall, the first whole bunch of them are mandated. There was revisions to New Jersey Administrative Code. And then if you go about maybe, where is it? Towards, towards the middle end, you'll see the Student Sun Protection that was signed into law by the governor. And that one just says that students are permitted to bring sunscreen to school. Staff is not to apply the sunscreen for them, but they are permitted to bring sunscreen. The Student Use of Vehicles on School Grounds, you'll see the policy and regulation. The big change is that it used to say, or currently it says, students in grades five and up are able to ride their bikes to school, and we're asking for grades four and up because we have plenty of grade four students that wish to ride their bikes. Honoring Student Achievement in Class Rank, we're updating the verbiage in, in those policies to read grade point average, which is what we are using to determine student achievement in class rank, whereas it used to say quality. which is what we are using to determine student achievement in class rank, whereas it used to say quality points. And the gifted and talented one, it had a whole list of old programs that we no longer use to determine if a child enters our gifted and talented program, so we updated it with the programs we do currently use.
Any questions?
Sure.
Do you, what are the programs that you're using for gifted and talented?
I will open it up for you. So...
And what grade levels?
Grades K to seven. Identifying students for our gifted and talented program. The matrix includes standardized test scores, benchmark and district assessments, reasoning ability assessments, which would be the COGAP, report card grades and indicators, and teacher recommendation along with the Ranzilli-Harman scale if needed.
I'm sorry, what was the last one?
Ranzilli-Harman scale, it's...
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Okay. Negotiations?
That sidebar would be to approve the two club stipends that were shared this evening.
Any questions? Personnel?
All right. Personnel. I feel like I'm losing a lot of speaking tonight. So we have, we have medical leave, maternity, and then two more maternity leaves. Point ten, we have appointments. So we have, number one, he reached the ninety-day mark for the contract, so he's currently working for us and he will continue onboard with us. Then number two is to replace Kim Ferrando, who you may recall resigned, she's moving to South Jersey. And this person became highly recommended. Then we have a lunch aid. The bus aid, we kept on here because I'm hoping to interview for the bus aid before Wednesday night's meeting. There were two candidates that should be coming my way. And then number five, it's bolded because that was just put on today for a substitute custodian. He actually was one of our students, he's been doing it, I think, two years now, in the, during the summer with us. So he will be a substitute because every now and then we're short and it'd be nice to have somebody. Then we have our stipends. Part one, number one, is the stipend for an evening custodian. Two is a revision, she was approved as lacrosse, but she's soccer. And three and four, you may recall, our middle school counselor did not fulfill the summer hours, and we had requested permission to ask our high school counselors if they can take on some of the summer hours before the start of the school year. So those are revisions. Point twelve, we have two staff members that have earned more college credits, and they're moving across the guide. Point thirteen are our new teachers, and the middle column is a list of our new teachers. And to the left are their mentors across, you know, across our district, it's based on their building typically. And fourteen is to approve a clinical internship for speech-language pathology. I, my understanding is that this is the daughter of Mr. White.
Mr. Who?
I say that because I didn't confirm with Mr. White, but that's what I was told. Okay.
Did Jim teach her?
Yes.
Nice.
That's nice. Any questions?
Of course.
Okay. I'm ready.
On twenty-five, twenty-six, ten, number four, the bus aid, how many hours does a bus aid get?
May I call a friend?
Phone a friend.
Most of them are just the, like, two hours in the morning, two hours, they have to say four a day, twenty hours a week. There's one that does a little bit more because they do the midday runs, like for preschool. So ranging from twenty to twenty-five.
I'm good.
Through the chair.
Thanks.
From my personal knowledge, what's the difference between the five-fifty and the thousand for the mentor?
Good question. If they have their certificate of eligibility, their CE, then it is the thousand dollars. If they have their CEAS, Certificate of Eligibility with Advanced Standing, then it's the five-fifty. And that is typically determined by the program that they went to school for.
And Sylvia, I didn't mean to cut you off, if you have more questions, I'm sorry. I said, I didn't mean to cut you off, if you have more questions, I'm sorry.
I said I was done before you even asked. For now.
Any other questions, guys? Okay. Did anybody want to do any of their reports tonight, or are we saving them for Wednesday?
Wednesday.
Wednesday.
I will share, just because I received an email that the middle school, high school PTO is meeting Wednesday, right before, immediately preceding our board meeting, here in the media center at six-thirty, just so that, you know, they extended me an invite.
It's their first in public one since... COVID.
Yes, it's the first time they're meeting in person, they were very excited.
Do we have any correspondence or anything?
Yeah, I do have something, I received a, a letter from the township a couple of weeks ago that they filed an application with the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection for an addition, a proposed addition to the firehouse on the corner of Saddle River Road in Cambridge. I guess they saw that I had so much fun.
They did.
They had so much fun dealing with the DEP with the field, I guess they felt they wanted to try it. I don't know. But just to give you FYI. I just said that they probably heard that I had so much fun dealing with the DEP with the field, that they wanted to try this.
So that's the corner of Cambridge and Saddle River?
Saddle River Road.
I am actually gonna steal some of my raise, I didn't even tell you, yep. So the township did call me today. So one of our projects was an awning in front of the main entrance of Helen I. Smith's school. And the application got denied because on their front, we had Helen I. Smith, but they already have a digital sign, and the ordinance says you cannot have two identifying signs on school property. So we changed the awning to say main entrance, and they did call today to say it was approved.
Oh, good.
Teddy.
Yeah.
They're so petty with these ordinances.
I get it. It's a town, it's an approved town ordinance. The purpose of the awning was to identify the main entrance, so I, I think it's okay.
Is everybody okay with that?
Wouldn't they get confused, they wouldn't know what school they're at? The officials?
Oh my goodness. Okay. Any old business? New business?
No, Tommy, it's a year round.
Oh, yeah, through the chair.
Sure.
This, last week, I think it was, they had back-to-school night for the high school, and it was really nice. The teachers were very nice, welcoming, the schools looked great. And that's it, everything looks really good, the teachers were, I guess they were excited that summer was over, but not really, but it was nice.
Yeah, I want to say, I was here for back-to-school night, and I sent an email, but a huge thank you to Ray and Mike O'Donnell and all our custodians, because we received so many compliments from parents walking through the hallways, and they just would stop and just say everyone, how lovely everything looked, and really excited about all the facility projects, so it was nice.
And the ice cream truck was a good kick, too.
They loved the ice cream truck. So did the volleyball team.
Through the chair, I just want to say that you and Ray did an awesome job getting that field done.
Yep.
The, the football game was phenomenal, the lights are awesome, it was just, it was a great night. And you did a great job.
It really was.
And you deserve praise.
Can you spray next time?
The gnats were ridiculous.
No, that was the whole town, it was the rain.
You know what, yeah, it was, I'm not even gonna touch it, but it was, it was the whole town. I woke up the next morning, I had gnats everywhere.
My pool was loaded with them.
Me too, me too, yeah.
Another update, though, is the digital scoreboard was installed. And we are receiving training, it's still scheduled for tomorrow, I hope so. And so hopefully, we'll have that scoreboard up and running for Friday night's game.
How big is that, like, feet-wise, this screen?
I would have to check.
Oh, now you're really pushing it.
Because everybody keeps saying it's great.
I would have to check the paperwork.
No problem, no, I...
Through the chair, just quick feedback on middle school back-to-school night. I got great feedback from a lot of the middle school parents that I know that they came in, you know, like, their nerves are a little up because they have their little ones going into seventh grade, and they got all their questions answered, and their expectations were exceeded, so, great job overall.
Through the chair, question?
Thank you, that's nice to hear.
Sorry. Question, comment, something? It was just something brought to my attention at the game last week at the opening, that the visitor's side is a little dark. There's no real, I mean, the lights are there and they're up, and I kind of saw that, what they were talking about. I don't know if that's something we can look out to for further down the road, or if there's we're putting on lights just for those nights, I don't know. But that was brought to my attention.
Well, the lights, the good thing about that is the lights are not shining on properties of the residences over there.
We talked about that, but I just wanted to, you know, but they're still sitting in the dark.
I do, I do have to say that I thought the same thing when I was sitting on our bleachers, watching the game. It looked dark, but when I walked back around the field, and you were actually in that space, it wasn't dark. As dark as you thought. Yeah. It looks like when you're sitting on, on the home bleachers and you're looking across, they look like they're completely in the dark. But when you walk around the track and you go over, it's much brighter over there than it looks when you're across the field. So I don't know if it's just the way the light...
There was also some lights at the field house that we realized, maybe halfway into the game, that they were on a sensor. So once we realized that you can turn them on, it got a little bit brighter. Learning curve.
We'll get it right. Anything else?
Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, through, as far as the football game. I know we used to have like a student section. That would have been great for that day, for all the kids to be up there, I don't know where...
So that was my vision, and that was, that was my vision, was to have a student section, and that's how my son's high school did it. The students, I guess, they were all there.
Yeah.
But I guess they're not accustomed, so maybe our student representatives can help us out with that. Because I guess they're not accustomed to a traditional student section. Maybe they haven't, like, our current students haven't experienced that maybe. So maybe our student representatives can help us for Friday night's game, and having like a section of the bleachers to be all our students and really like hype everybody up.
I was just gonna say that.
Go ahead, Mia.
All I was gonna say is, yeah, I definitely agree, I think that was part of it where I did notice a lot of students did come out, but like you said, we're all kind of like dispersed everywhere. So I don't know like how, you know, the student sections of other high schools work, but I know, I think someone was trying to get it together where it was gonna be like by grade level, but everyone, I assume the entire high school would be in one section. But where do you think that would be, like, which side, you know?
I'm just gonna say, I think like when I see most high schools do that, like, like the traditional student section, I think it's usually just by like, where there's the cheerleaders, because the cheers usually like, they're yelling at us, we're yelling back at them to hype everyone up. So I think if we like, honestly, like, we could definitely talk to the cheer coaches, we could talk to the cheerleaders, like, we know most of them. And we could get like, even like us, like, we could create posters and make that student section before the game, and then just create that like environment where like everyone, all the students are there. Because I, I agree, I really want that too, so we could get that working.
Is that where the band is also, in that section? Is that the same section that they would...
Yeah, band is by like, the, like, the, what's that?
The press box, right?
They're more by the box, they're like to the left of it, and then cheers more like, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and I definitely think, I have heard, yes, students wish that we did have like a more coordinated student section, so I do think it would be possible, like, I think it's definitely gonna be received well.
Well, I think it also helps, like, if students want to come to the game, but they're not coming in a large, like, peer group, and they just want to come, even if the parent drops them off by themselves, they have a place to go, that all the students are there.
And we could also get it like, just use, like, I know a lot of like high schools, they use social media for this, so they'll like, do like before a game day, they'll like announce like, oh, like, these are the cheers you should know before this game, so when you come, like, you're yelling them. So I feel like if we also like incorporate that, like, maybe just like a, like a social media account, like, just even with the cheerleaders, we could definitely get something going where it's like, this is where we should be, this is what you're chanting, like, come to, like, Friday night lights, like, get hyped, like, be there.
Well, I think they also do on Instagram, like, green colors.
Yeah, they do that too.
They do, and our cheerleaders have actually been wonderful, so I think that, that communication. So what I did for my speech was I actually reached out to the cheerleading coach, and I told him at the end I wanted to kind of do a cheer and hype everybody up, but I was petrified because I'm like, what if I say, let's say blue, and no one says blue? So they were great, and they were like, no, we have this, like, our cheerleaders do this. So I, I know that they'd be willing to work with you guys, I think that's actually a really great idea to have you guys help out with that.
We're gonna discuss actually putting signs on that section.
Okay.
I just hope, right? So we can help you guys out with that.
So I'll be in touch.
Okay. Anybody have anything else? Okay, so I need a motion to open to the public again?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Does anybody want to speak? Okay, you gotta, I have to say, I have to say something first, so give me a second. Okay. Residents are requested to state their names, addresses, and subject matter. In the event it appears the public comment portion of the meeting may exceed forty-five minutes, the presiding officer may limit each statement made by a participant to five minutes duration. Issues raised by members of the public may or may not be responded to by the board. All comments will be considered and a response will be forthcoming if and when appropriate. The board asks that members of the public be courteous and mindful of the rights of other individuals when speaking. Specifically, comments regarding students and employees of the board are discouraged and will not be responded to by the board. Students and employees have specific legal rights afforded by the law of New Jer, laws of New Jersey. The board bears no responsibility, nor will it be liable for any comments made by members of the public. Members of the public should consider their comments in light of the legal rights of those affected or identified in their comments, and may be aware that they are legally responsible and liable for their comments. Thank you.
Can you repeat that?
Just step up to the microphone and tell us who you are.
Can you repeat that?
Look, lady.
My name is Bonnie Anastasio, I live at forty-nine Platt Avenue here in Saddle Brook. My daughter actually attends Helen I. Smith's school currently, she's a sixth grader. But I just had a question about the student section. Are you looking to do that within the gymnasium as well? Having a student section for pep and, you know, for other sports?
That's a great question. I don't think we ever thought about it. But now we will. Thank you.
No, I appreciate you sharing that thought, that was not a thought in my mind, but I think it is a good idea. I'll have to connect with our athletic director and our coaches, and we'll see. Thank you.
Great idea. Okay. Okay. Can I have a motion to close the, oh, I can't even talk anymore, I don't even know what I'm saying. Thank you, and they already answered me. All in favor? Opposed?
Maybe, no, aye.
Oh my goodness.
I am not opposed.
We all have the giggles tonight, I think. Okay. We're not going into close, correct? So I'm not gonna say any of that.
No.
Okay. Can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion.
Second.
Oh my goodness. All in favor? Opposed? Thank you very much, everybody, we will see...